Good morning. I call the order this regular scheduled meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, April 17th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Henigan, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Matthew Mitchell. Commissioner. Commissioner Susanna Ballard. Commissioner Joan DeZuro.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird.
Here.
Commissioner Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson. Commissioner J.P. Thornton. Commissioner Jim Harris.
Here.
Vice Chair Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Chair David Diaz.
Here. Thank you. And we are missing one regular member, so I'm going to ask Mr. Stevenson to please come up to the dais and sign in, please, and let me know when you're ready. Mr. Gilbert, would you please, any correspondence and announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, actually, I have some. I spoke a little too soon at the last meeting that you guys would have May 1st off. We had a case come up on short notice that they weren't aware that they needed a CUP, it's the Assistant Living on Bahama Avenue, that they need a CUP for activities that they're going to be switching to. It's still going to be Assistant Living, similar to what I did before, but they need a conditional use permit, and they weren't aware, and that's holding up a number of components of the project, so we decided to put it on for the first. So that'll be the only item for the next meeting. On April 9th, the City Council approved the Heat Hotel PD Amendment with a change to the staff and planning commission recommendation. They approved the six units on the second floor, the bar, outdoor bar patio, but did not approve the two-unit structure underneath the bridge. The Tower Comm lease agreements for the McCullough and Walnut Cell Towers were also approved on the 9th by City Council. Coming up on 4/23, the council will hear the 7,000 Chenoweth rezone from AP to LI, which was reviewed by the council or by the planning commission on April 3rd. That'll be before then for approval. So that's all I have at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. All right, Commissioners, we all received the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any deletions, additions, or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Commissioner DeZuro makes the motions, and Commissioner, Chairman, Vice Chairman Medley, seconds. Any further discussion? Are we ever ready to vote?
The motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this process. City staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case to the commission. Once that is done, we will open a public hearing to give community members an opportunity to ask questions or provide input. I ask that anyone who wishes to speak limit their trips to the microphone to once per item, and then keep their comments to less than five minutes. Please stay on point and refrain from discussing subject matter not pertinent to the item being considered. There will be an opportunity for the public to address the commission about other topics later in the meeting. After public testimony is taken, I will close the public hearing and bring the item back to the table for city staff's recommendation, further discussion amongst the commissioners, and eventually a motion to either approve or disapprove. And thank you for following this protocol. Okay, the first item today is item number ID 24-4232, a request to amend the general development plan for Phase 2 of Plan Development Number 07-002-0001 Havasu Foothills Estates to include tract 2390, approximately 10.27 acres of vacant land, APN 113-01-032, the Villas Estates, and amending the zoning classification and district boundary of tract 2390 from residential estates plan development R-E-PD district to R-E-PD to allow a reduced minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet per lot with the maximum number of lots permitted not to exceed 22 total lots. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the northernmost side of Havasu Foothills Estates, adjacent to, here, I'm kind of circling it on the map, adjacent to existing boundary of Phase 2, which is right here. These lots have been included in the maximum 697 total lots permitted in Havasu Foothills Estates for several years, but it's just now moving forward with necessary steps to develop the subdivision. These are not newly added lots, I want to stress that. These have been in the plan for a while and are included in that total. Advance the slide. Zoning map. The property is zoned residential estate plan development and will stay this category with a new general development plan that permits slightly smaller lot sizes of 12,000 square feet per lot. No extra lots are being permitted above the 22 already accounted for in the overall total. On the PD amendment slide here, the applicant is requesting to amend the approved PD plan to allow the reduced lot areas and include in Havasu Foothills Estates Phase 2 instead of Phase 3, as the tract has access from Phase 2 to the east and has no connection to anything in Phase 3, which at the present is just the first part of the Trinity project. Preliminary plat slide, the proposed preliminary plat shows the same 22 lots, and it's actually a lot layout map. Accounted for in the overall lot, I'm sorry, total 697 lots for Havasu Foothills Estates, plus two undevelopable parcels, and there's one here, and then there's a longer one here, reflecting some lots with smaller lot areas between 12,000 and 15,000 square feet to account for topography and drainage ways. Regarding this proposed lot layout that's up here right now, it's important to note that of the 22 lots, seven of these lots will still be 15,000 square feet and meet the existing RE standards. Approximately another seven of them will be between 14 and 15,000, so a very small decrease, and then eight of them will be in that 12,000 to 14,000-foot range. So this is not a wholesale reduction to get to 12,000 square feet, which is still considerably larger than R1 lot. It's more an attempt to make the lots fit better. As you can see on here, there's a drainage way through here, and then this parcel down here, which is undevelopable, to make the lots more functional in how they do the layout and still achieve the 22 lots that were originally accounted for for this development. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'll get to recommendations when we get back from hearing from the public and the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Gilbert, so what you're saying here, just as a point of clarification, this does not change the density whatsoever as to what was previously planned under the PD?
No, it does not. The applicant attempted to do this two years ago. They had submitted an application, but before it even got to the planning commission, they withdrew it to go back and look at different aspects, and they came back with a much different request than they had two years ago. So this had been in the works for a long time. They're not adding any lots. This has been planned for quite some time, going back to ordinance 2003.
Additionally, what's the purpose of the two parcels?
They're just going to be remnant parcels, parcel D and parcel C, it looks like. Parcel C is most likely, have the applicant explain that, appears to involve drainage through the site, and parcel D, from what we can tell on aerials, appears to be undevelopable due to topography.
I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, as the applicant here would like to address the commission, please say your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, Chairman.
You're not on.
Not on.
How about now?
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Matt Hall with Iris Development Services. Mr. Gilbert pretty much laid out exactly what we're trying to do here, is we reduce half the subdivision to some to less than 50,000 square foot lots. And to answer Commissioner Harris's question, parcel C is a drainage channel that will route some of that wash to the north through Villas on the east, through Villas Estates, and then parcel D is a stormwater detention pond. I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I do.
Commissioner Stevenson?
So what changed from the original 15,000 minimum to now needing to go to the 12,000? I know we're talking about the same number of lots, but what changed in the layout that required this request?
So some of the topography and some of the development restrictions of that wash, and trying to limit the impact of some of those lots and the Villas down to the south. And also, we felt it was a better transition from what we had in the Villas of like 6,000, 9,000 square foot lots, and transition up to bigger lots down into the cul-de-sac.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to ask if anyone from the public at this time. We do have one person that previously signed up before we do a general call, Ms. Dawn Kirk. Please say your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dawn Kirk, D-A-W-N-K-I-R-K. In regard to this request to amend the general development plan, I just have a couple comments. There's a sign up at where the proposed change is going to be, and the sign says it's going to go from rezoned from RE/PD to RE/PD. So I did a little bit of research, and RE is obviously, as you know, residential estates, which calls for a minimum of 15,000 square feet, as you guys already know. So my question is, I don't see any other zoning district that would apply that meets the definition of RE. So I think you guys have a problem with notice to the public, because the sign says it's going to be residential estates to residential estates, and me, you know, Jane Smith goes to look at residential estates, and I'm expecting 15,000 square foot minimum, and that's not true. And I think the sign probably should have read residential estates to R1, which is a minimum of 10,000 square foot. So I guess my question is, are you guys changing the definition of residential estates? Are you creating a new district? Why was it RE to RE? Okay, second concern is that I feel like the city maybe has done a less-than-stellar job of keeping us apprised of the actual count at a 697 allowed by the general plan in the foothills. So I think the last meeting I came to, Mr. Harris, was the commissioner, and Trinity was here getting approval for their 22 lots. And I think at that time, it was, if my memory serves correctly, there was only 88 left out of the 697. So if you take the 88 and take out the 22 that was approved for, and Mr. Harris even made a comment to Trinity, and they said, "Are you sure that this is what you want to do? Because we're not going to go over the 697." And they said, "Yes." So that leaves 64. So does this 22 come out of the 64, or is this 22 in addition to the 697 total? It seems to me like, I feel like we kind of like lost track of the actual count, and I feel like maybe we have a Mary Poppins bag, a magic bag, where we just keep out pulling out lots, "Oh yeah, this is part of the 697." What is the actual count? What's the actual count?
Mr. Gilbert, would you like to address that, please?
Her very last question is a very good question. It's not one, obviously, we can answer right now, because we would have to go to the map and count every single lot to give a stated, exact number right today. However, this particular subdivision is several years old in the planning and has been included in that 697 that was brought up in the Trinity hearings. The count in the Trinity hearings was accurate to the best of our knowledge that they had the 88 lots, but that did not count this. This was already accounted for as tract 2390 in our plans. And it looks like our director has some comments he wants to make here.
Mr. Tuneman, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Commission. Just to clarify, so the 697, when Trinity came to you, this 22 lots was already in the works, so that was included in the count prior to Trinity coming to you. Trinity was available for 90 lots. They got approved for 90 lots that did not include these 22. Trinity Land Development right now has a preliminary plat that has 60 lots preliminary platted, which leaves them 22 lots to get to the 90 that they're entitled to, which will put the total foothills amount at 697. So hopefully that clarifies what's happening here.
We just want to be, I mean, the public, and I know, Mr. Harrison, you were the chair, we talked about this, we want to be clear that the 697 is not going to be going above, because even city council members have mentioned, "We're not going to go above that 697 to this other infrastructure that's in place."
That is correct. 697 is the magic number that this development between Phase 1, 2, and 3 were allowed. So Trinity had, basically, the Trinity Development got the last 90 lots that were available to get to the 697.
Okay, Mr. Tuneman, one more thing while you're here. Would you address Ms. Kirk's comment about the R1 versus RE in the plan development?
Yes, be more than happy to. Thank you. So the reason that the P/PD, so we have an RE/PD, the slash PD is a plan development, and the reason that it's a plan development is because what they're requesting doesn't fit into a cake book zoning category.
It takes into account exceptions.
It takes into account exceptions. So that's why it goes from RE/PD to RE/PD, because they're asking for some exceptions to the RE zoning district, which is the minimum lot size, but they're not asking for the setbacks that go along with RE, the building heights, et cetera. So that's the only exception that they're asking for from the RE zoning district as it's a cake book, or as it's stated in the development code. So the PD part is the exception. So it wouldn't make sense to have it R1, because they don't want, R1 requires five-foot building setbacks, RE requires 10. So that's why it wasn't, the base zoning wasn't used as R1, it was used as RE, because they want to abide by those standards that are in the development code, but they're asking for the one exception due to lot size.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kirk, continue if you need to.
I think that was everything. Let me just check my notes really quickly, if you don't mind. RE, R1. I guess a follow-up question then is, for the John Smiths and the Jane Smiths out there like myself, where would I find the information to know that RE/PD, this plan development, is like a special case? Because in my purview of everything, I don't see that. So I'm just worried about the notice, okay? Because I think a lot of people drove up there and they thought, "Oh, okay, well, it's RE, so it's okay. It's going to be 15,000 square foot." So, you know, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert, can you tell her the easiest way to get to that information, if you know? I know we say it's online sometimes, but sometimes people have a...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
One, included on the notice is the information. If it's somewhat unclear, we do provide the contact information for the city. So if you read the notice and you don't understand it, you can absolutely reach out to the city, and that's why we include the city information on that contact. Two, the city code contains all of the information online. So if you wanted to go and read all about plan developments, RE, R1, whatever you want, everything is available online at the city code. Three, the whole purpose of the notice is to bring people to the meetings to ask their questions, which occurred. So we really did achieve what was necessary to be achieved.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Muleano Torres, T-U-S-N-T-O-R-R-E-S. I'm a resident. I take a little bit of exception to Mr. Gilbert's comment, that it would fit better. How is 12,000 fitting better than 15,000? Fit better is kind of vague. And the other thing is, why are we doing exceptions? I see no reason for an exception. You folks are going to be asking questions, you're going to be making a vote, but I think it's very important for the public to know what is it required to make an exception. Example, I have an RV, I want planning on an RV garage, and I need two extra more feet to get closer to the curb, but that's not allowed. Is exception just because it'll fit better? I think the 15,000 is appropriate. The 12,000 is not. There's no rationale for the 12,000, other than it will fit better. I don't think that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question, sir? Where do you currently reside? I live up in the foothills. In the foothills? Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
... respond to that. I would defer to the applicant on the fit. That was just one of the reasons that they did bring this forward, is the only reason I stated that. The applicant needs to make the argument on that. However, one of the statements the applicant did make earlier is the 6,000 to 9,000 square foot lots that are directly adjacent to the east are zoned MUN, and there would be a better transition up to the 15,000 square foot lots at the west end of the cul-de-sac for their development, to start smaller at the east end with the 12s as a step up from 6,000 to 9,000, then to their 12s, and then on up to 15 at the end. So it is, it's a reasonable request to grade the lot sizes on up till you get to the biggest ones at the furthest extent. Makes a lot of sense. If you notice on this map right here, the MUN area is this entire area right here. So these are all the smaller lots, as you can see by the lot sizes there. So all of these lots, even the 12,000 square foot ones, will be considerably larger than these.
Thank you. Did applicant like to address anything that the public said? It's your choice. You don't have to, but if you'd like to, you're welcome.
I said, just to piggyback off what Mr. Gilbert said, it was a zoning and a transition from the smaller lots to the almost 30,000 square foot lots at the end of the cul-de-sac. And also, it limits, like I mentioned before, it limits the impact on the rest of the Villas up there, and also the amount of impact it has on that existing drainage channel also.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else from the public who would like, please, come up to the front, say your name and spell your last name for the record?
Somebody's tall. Ben Felder, F-E-L-D-E-R. Hi, I also live up in the foothills, and I have a question about Mr. Harris's comment about density. Okay, as you know, density is the amount of matter or something in a certain area, okay? The way I look at the whole foothills project, that 697 was supposed to be for the entire area, including Trinity, when it started. And since I bought my property, there's been a lot of changes where they ended up putting a lot of the smaller lots, or a lot more of the smaller lots up there, rather than the larger ones. So they basically crammed the 697 into like half the property. So I look at it and I go, "Why do we want to keep doing that?" That area was supposed to be set up to be nice, residential estate, big lots, yet over time, it keeps changing, 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 so the developers can make more and more money. And we, the residents, are the ones getting hurt. I mean, I get the idea that it's hard to grade that area, and they probably couldn't figure that out when they did the original plans, and you have to be actually on the ground looking at it to see that the wash areas caused problems. But why do we want to just back off and let them do that? Make them combine a couple lots. We still have that whole Trinity area where it's graded at risk, or whatever it's supposed to be. It looks horrible. You know, everybody's saying you're not going to allow any more up there unless they do the infrastructure, but we are so far away from what the original intent for that area is, why do we want to keep doing this? Why don't we hold firm a little bit and say, "No, it's supposed to be RE, 15,000, let's keep it that." And if you lose a lot, excuse me, if you lose a lot or two, you lose a lot or two. You know, why do the residents have to be the ones that keep paying for all this? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address the commission?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a quick comment?
Yes.
This has been a process that has been going on for decades. I have binders full of information of all the changes that have occurred since the inception of the project. I think a lot of people that are coming here now don't know or understand the history and how many exceptions have been made along the entire portion of the project. And so I just want everybody to keep that in mind. I know we have people coming today asking for plan developments and asking for exceptions, but that's no different than the people that came 10 years ago or 20 years ago when putting this development together. There have been many requests for plan developments. There have been many requests for exceptions along the way. And so just keep that in mind when you hear those comments.
Might I add? The whole purpose of a PD is to accommodate exceptions. Every single lot in the foothills falls under a PD. Every single lot up there within that one square mile. And there are exceptions with regards to height, setbacks, density, et cetera. So it's an ongoing process, and it did start all the way back in the early 2000s. And that's the reason that they have the PD process, is to accommodate this ever-changing landscape, so to speak.
David?
No, you were one time, and you could speak afterwards. I'm sorry, you're only allowed one.
David?
Ms. Wilson?
So I think the other thing that I would add is, no matter what comes to planning and zoning and whatever, I think that also what happens is that when you folks buy your property, no matter where it is in town, what you might have been told was probably inaccurate information. Unfortunately, the real estate industry has done a horrible job at communicating effectively to the public of saying, "This is what this is, and this is what's next to you, and it's never going to change." You were misinformed, right? Like that that should never happen. And unfortunately, in this sort of situations, it's then left up to you guys to say, "Well, hang on. I bought this and was under the impression it was going to be something completely different." And I will take responsibility as far as the real estate community is concerned, that we've done an awful job at effectively communicating that things can change. There are things put into place as far as city code is concerned and plans are concerned that allows for things to modify and change, and unfortunately, when you go to buy your property, it's not the impression you're under.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Okay, Mr. Gilbert, I'm going to ask you for your recommendation, please, after I close the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the findings, and that's in the staff report and following this hearing, Development Review Committee recommends approval to the City Council Land Use Action 24-4232, a request to amend the general development plan for Phase 2 of Plan Development Number 07-002-0001 Havasu Foothills Estates to include tract 2390, approximately 10.27 acres of vacant land, APN 113-01-032, the Villas Estates, and amending the zoning classification district boundary of tract 2390 from residential estates plan development, that's RE/PD district to RE/PD, to allow a reduced minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet per lot with the maximum number of lots permitted not to exceed 22 total lots. Mr. Chairman, that completes the recommendation.
And then my comment before we vote, again, I want to get it really clear on the record that this does not go over the 697. This is included in that 697, and it's not going to go beyond that. So any other questions from the comments, from the, Mr. Gilbert, or I'm looking for a motion to approve or disapprove? Anybody? I can't give it myself. Mr. Harris?
I move that we approve ID number, or application number, 24-4232 with staff's recommendations.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Harris? Have a second?
A second. A second.
Second by Commissioner DeZuro. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we're ready to vote.
The motion passes 7 to 0.
All right, thank you. Good luck to you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this goes before City Council on May 14.
Okay, thank you. All right, that was the only item on our agenda for today, so now I'm going to open up to a call to the public. And this is a call to the public, it's an opportunity for the public to address the commission about a topic that's not on today's agenda. We are unable to respond directly or have a two-way conversation. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium and spell your last name for the record. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the commission at this time? Anyone? Ms. Kirk, please say your name again.
Hi, Dawn Kirk again. I'm sorry, is it limited? We can't talk about what was just passed, or we, there's confusion?
You could say anything you want, we just can't have a two-way conversation.
Okay. So my only follow-up comment is, in response to that we were misinformed, we've been misinformed by the city as well. As you guys probably know, there's an ordinance out there, I forget the number, 17 dash, I don't know, 133 or something like that, that required the developers in the Arroyos Phase 2 to put a park in. That's ordinance, that's, that's ordinance. And the requirement was that when there was 100 certificates of occupancy, the developer was supposed to develop half the park, and when the, another 200 certificates of occupancy were, were granted, then the park was supposed to be finished. And of course, that never came to be. So we were misinformed, not only by the real estate people, but by the city, and the developers actually violating the ordinance. So, and here we are with no park. Nobody wants to talk about it. Where's our park? So, you know, the developer's probably long gone now. He made his money, he's gone. Eh, we don't need to do the park. And of course, the city's not inclined to do the park, because the developer was supposed to pay for the park. So, you know, there's a lot of misinformation going on, so just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please say your name again, please.
No problem. Ben Felder. I appreciate your comment about real estate agents. I get it, you're jobs to sell, but my comment wasn't just about people aren't telling us the truth or anything like that, or being completely open and honest with all the information. My comment's more about the way that project started, and we're, if you just put a snapshot on where it is right now, we basically crammed all the lots into half the land. That wasn't the intent, okay? And I get things change, you know, for reasons like these people today. You know, you run into problems when you build stuff, okay? I'm a retired engineer, I solve problems every day of my life, forever. But at some point, we got to stop and go, hey, what is really right for the area? And just continually cramming more and more into less and less isn't the answer. I mean, it's not like we're trying to solve, you know, low-income housing problem here. These are expensive houses, and people are coming here for a reason. I mean, look at the clientele that buy in the foothills, look at the clientele that are buying in the Riviera and everywhere else. It's not type of people that are going to want to keep seeing things change like this. So I'm asking you guys to think about that as we go forward. You know, it's about the infrastructure, it's about the look of the project. You know, we need to do the right things for the residents, not for the developers, per se. And I'm going to make one other comment that isn't going to go over very well, but there is a member on this planning commission that is an active contractor in those areas, and I do not understand why by ethics, he's not recusing himself. Okay, I know that's come up before, I think it needs to be brought up again. It's only one vote, but I know, like, I'm on the homeowners' design review committee up there. If my neighbor's project come up, I don't vote on it, because I don't think that's right. Voting on a project where you're an active developer? Come on, there's got to be ethics around here somewhere. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak during Call to the Public? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the call to the public, and there, I'm going to announce the future meetings. We do have a regularly scheduled meeting of our Plan and Zoning Commission will be Wednesday, May 1, at 9:30 PM, and I believe it's going to be at the new courthouse, is that correct? So it'll be at the new municipal courthouse here on Akoma. And with that said, any other comments by the commissioners? I don't see any, so I'm going to close the meeting, the meeting is adjourned.